For the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to join me in a moment of silence for men and women in uniform. Thank you. Calling me to order four minutes after six, John, do you want to talk about the adjustments to the agenda?
Yeah. Just have one to for an executive session on 4056E for legal.
You'll hand that stuff out when we go in?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion to review, approve the minutes from July 1st meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the July 1st, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Will any corrections or adjustments?
Second. All of them. Any discussion? All in favor? Public dispute for non-agenda items. Speak now, forever holds a peace. Thank you.
Go next meeting.
Twenty-five boards and committees, nothing. Six consent items. One change in your paperwork here, it's not Alice Smith for Cemetery Committee, it's Denise Mercier. So as you look at that, you might want to make a change there. So we'll start with that. The Boards of Committee appointments. Go individually, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the request for appointment submitted by Denise Mercier for the Cemetery Committee for term ending... Do we need to indicate?
Six thirty twenty-two.
Six thirty twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor? Ann Lab for Cemetery Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Ann Lab for the Cemetery Committee for a term of three years, ending on six thirty twenty-two.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Larry Coog, Airport Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the request for appointment submitted by Larry Coog for the Airport Commission for a term ending... Is it three years?
Yes.
Six thirty twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? And Donnie Nuttall, Ordinance Committee, I would like to move that Donnie Nuttall have his head examined one more time for the Ordinance Committee. Thank you for your service.
No problem.
Was that the nomination?
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Donnie. All in favor? Vote. We have a thank you note for the, for the, from the fire department, to the fire department, and I'm going to start off by apologizing, I don't know how to pronounce the last name, but I would like to read it to you. It says, "To our volunteers, thank you so much for your quick response in saving our home. We were so impressed," and I'm not quite sure how this works, so it may sound broken, and I apologize, "but we were so impressed when we arrived home and the only trace that you had saved us was the smell of burnt sugar." It says, "Rangely is so lucky to have such a dedicated and professional team. Gratefully, Dave and Carol..."
Bachelor.
Say it again?
Bachelor.
Well, there you go. We all tried to figure that out. I can say that, bachelor. Yep, thank you. It's nice to get these letters. These guys do work hard, guys and gals. Full business, nothing under downtown revitalization unless somebody in the board had something to report. Okay? Allen Street, Jeff Preble from Wright Pierce. You're here with us?
I am here, yes.
Give us a little update on Wright Pierce. No? John, why don't you fill in the blanks then? We'll go from there.
Yeah, we had a bid opening, and as you may have already seen, the bid was quite... M&amp;H got the low bid. We, Jeff, went down through the spreadsheets and compared them. We were able to cut a little bit out of M&amp;H's bid and show you how much was the water district's responsibility, how much was the sewer district's responsibility, and it fell down quite a bit higher than money we had estimated a few years ago, so I believe it was, keep average, like seven hundred?
Seven eighty.
Seven fifty was the estimate to do Allen Street, and low bid is a million three, and that includes, like, holding up on the finished pavement for another year or two as well, so. And then also with that was a construction administration proposal from Wright Pierce. Two pages. I believe the town share of that would be like sixty. So we have construction administration for the town, twenty-five thousand, resident inspection, sixty-two thousand four hundred, total eighty-seven-four, and then the water district's portion and other, twenty-two thousand thirty-seven, three seventy-five, or rather, construction, resident inspection, forty-one, that's sixty-three, so a total engineering, one hundred fifty-one thousand, three seventy-five. And then Jeff had put in on our behalf grant request for those culverts out of Ball Mountain, and the state awarded us both. Each, each one is worth ninety-five thousand grant from the state, so we still have to estimate total cost, I think it was like two hundred thousand for each one, I guess.
I believe so, yeah.
So two hundred thousand for each one, we get ninety-five from the state, we're still recording with another hundred something thousand. So those three items lead me to look at also Loom Lake Road, given the estimates. Since M&amp;H got the low bid, we get a pretty good current figure for all the different unit costs for all the components that go into the road, and that road, both roads are about the same distance. The only thing different would be there's no utilities on Loom Lake, but you still have sidewalk, you still have box cutting, you still have pavement, you know, fill. So we could probably come up with a pretty good estimate for what that's going to be as well, with current numbers. And then hope we get the Northern Border Grant, because even with that, it looks like we're going to be a half a million dollar shot, given what we just saw on Allen Street.
One of the reasons for the Allen Street cost being up is, you know, when combined with the water district, the water district got their grant through the drinking water SRF program, and attached to that is requirements for Davis Bacon Wages and that sort of thing, and some of those wage rates that are in there are very high, just because of lack of response to some of the surveys that the state gets back. So, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons, and I mean, contractors are also very busy, it's not the optimal time to be bidding work here, you know, so I'm sure that's reflected in the price, prices there as well.
What's your note here, Jeff, about possible cost reduction? Getting, getting rid of a little bit of Davis Bacon?
Yeah, one of the options that we may want to consider is if we look at the paving piece of it, we may be able to break that out under a separate contract, and, you know, if that's just a town contract itself detached from water district portion, then it wouldn't be susceptible to, wouldn't be required to have the Davis Bacon wages, so there's a potential to drop those paving prices down if you did that separately. Plus, that brings in extra coordination with different contractors and stuff, but it's always something you've got to work through, but that may be something you wish to consider if you're still looking to, you know, pare down some of the, some of the pricing.
Kind of time does that add to a project that's already pushing in the summer?
Wouldn't necessarily add a lot of, because we can get a lot of the utility work and stuff going and get that piece of it in the works while, you know, once construction gets started.
So you'd be...
So it wouldn't really extend the time. Still looking at, talking with Kenny after the bid, they were thinking of stepping down to lower end and working their way up to School Street here this fall, and then picking up from School Street up to the, up to the top of the hill there in the spring to complete it, so it's, you know, when you look at the fall construction, then the spring construction, so you get about, you know, six, six and a half months of construction total they have to pay watch over.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On M&amp;H's, I see they blew out stuff that's, we're going to do or is going to be put off for a year or so.
Right, yeah.
But one of them kind of interests me is six-inch sewer services and eight-inch PVC server. Why was that? Is that something the town's going to do?
We were planning on replacing the sewer services all the way up through.
We would hope so, yeah.
And then the cost for that would be for the, by the sewer commission.
Uh-huh.
The eight-inch PVC sewers up at the top, we want to extend out beyond to the adjacent property, and that would be by the developer.
Okay. So it's not the whole street, it's just part of that, the upper end of it?
The services would be along the whole street.
Right, I understand that, but you're going to run a spur off it somewhere?
Yeah, right at the top, up by Saddleback View.
Okay.
You're extending the maintenance top of the road.
Yeah. And another thing...
That's a little water line there, too.
And another thing here, I see M&amp;H's, you know, they blew out a few things, so their price is a little less, or a lot less in some cases, but the total water systems items, thirty-six through forty-six, three hundred and twenty-six thousand from M&amp;H, and six hundred and thirty-three thousand from Sargent, and eight hundred and twenty-one thousand from Pratt? It's the same, it's the same, same job, right? How, I don't understand how they can be that far apart.
They've got plenty of work buried in some way.
Yeah, there's some actual bid projects, and hope that they're the only bidder, and they have a hefty profit margin, so, I mean, I think that kind of played into Pratt's.
Okay, it just stands out like a sore thumb.
Donnie, just so you know, Jeff threw those out.
Yeah? Yeah, I figured it. Okay, those I understand, except for that one, and why is this only...
There were several highlights on M&amp;H's bid, a lot of it was ground off areas.
Yeah.
So we're checking the unit prices going down through, just the extensions, they don't quite add up to what they had written in their bid form.
Okay.
It just ended up being like a hundred bucks less than what we read off at the bid opening.
Yeah, Cindy?
Jeff, just a follow-up, want to comment you made earlier, you mentioned something about the timing not being advantageous, advantageous to the town, and you also kind of referred to that a little bit. Are you saying that, you know, the bidding should have gone out several months ago so these contractors could plan ahead and submit more competitive bids?
Ideally, you know, if you can bid something in the winter months, I mean, that's when you're going to get your best pricing, contractors lining stuff up. In this case, by the time the, you know, coordinated with the district and when the SRF program was announced, you know, what their awards and stuff were, that kind of finalized their funding, and that was in April or something, I think, Al, that we finally got word from, from the drinking water program that they had awarded the grant, and that sort of thing. Kind of played by that, and once we got that information, then we're able to get the project out on the street.
Yeah. So, yeah, a little crunchy for a project this year. So is it, I mean, obviously, we don't have any money, we don't have all the money for this.
If the plan from M&amp;H is to only go as far as School Street, remain to school, yeah, we have money to do that part of it, but then you have to, my guess is we're going to have to raise more money to finish some of these projects, given the prices that are out there. Like far higher than what we had originally estimated, and I think that's typical, I mean, these were done, what, three years ago at least? The original two point one million. I had the same problem in Mexico, the first one we did was two point nine million, and a few years later, we had to borrow another eight hundred thousand just to finish projects within the original scope, and I got a CDBG grant for five hundred thousand in the meantime. Well, I mean, the, the prices vary every year.
So would it, I'm just, would it be in the town's best interest to rebid this out this winter?
Could get worse.
We could. My, my advice would be, you know, have to keep an eye, and, you know, maybe with Jeff's help, of, you know, try to really look at all the road projects that were originally estimated to figure out where we stand and what more money we may need, and decide whether you want to go ask the town if we can borrow some more money.
You said, you had something?
I said it could get worse.
Could get worse.
You could do this again, and it could be, two and a half Pratt's could be the low bid next time.
That's true. So we have to finish paving Ball Mountain, we have to probably come up with at least two hundred thousand dollars for our share of replacing those box culverts. Right now, they're just round culverts, but the ones that are now legal for streams that run constantly, so. We've got five hundred thousand for Loom Lake, and we may soon find out about the Northern Borders Grant, we put in the five hundred thousand, but given the prices, it looks like it's going to be at least...
Half a million, sure.
Million and a half. In that neighborhood, and so far, with, with the estimates that we had given, the grant was five and five, and our share was going to be sixty thousand, and M&amp;H was going to put up fifty thousand in whatever materials, whatever they were going to come up with fifty thousand. So, you know, we might need to borrow another million dollars, but the town, two years in a row now voted overwhelmingly to put all your excise tax revenue into future road projects, so if that goes two more years, or three more years, or four more years, I think you need to ask the town that, because we're obviously very behind doing these roads.
But the excess taxes pay in the bond payment.
That's what I was told, but the actual wording in the town meeting warrants says to go into a road reserve fund for future road projects. In the last town meeting, it was like three forty-five, twenty-four was the vote, with nine, nine blind.
We did this with the understanding that the excise tax would be able to pay the bond.
Dave's right.
So my understanding is what we've done so far, the money we've taken out, it's more like a, oh, a credit or something?
A block of construction loan.
Yeah, so that eventually we stop paying that back, and so we, if we have the excise tax money in that reserve fund, then what we need is to stop paying it back, we'll take it out of that, obviously, because you didn't, you don't have any account for debt service.
Right.
You know, so that's not how you did it, so.
What's the balance on that?
I believe we have, what, a million three maybe left in that, something like that.
In that construction, the one point, yeah, the thing is about one point three million left to spend.
So out of the two point one million, there's still one point three million unspent. So that's why I said, you know, if we wanted to approve M&amp;H's contract and knowing they're only going to go as far as School Street this year, there's plenty of money there, and there's plenty of money there to stop doing those box culverts.
Kind of have to do the box culverts because they're granted.
That, they're granted, and the Loom Lake Road, we've got five hundred thousand, we've already signed for DOT, that's, that's all money in Rangely's pocket.
When does that have to start, Mike?
We have all of this construction season and all our next construction season.
So here's what I'd suggest for the next meeting, is to come back with the numbers and show where they're dedicated to. So Ball Mountain Road is this, and this is the amount of money we have, and this is what we think is the remaining. You with me, Keith?
Yes, sir.
And same thing for Allen Street, for Loom Lake Road, and whatever other projects, there's a, there's a finishing component to Lake Street, and then Seaworth.
Just so you know, we just got a quote from Pike for twenty-five thousand, a finished coat, finished coat on Lake and Alder. We know what that is going to cost. Keith's looking to do another paving outfit, too.
So we could do the box culverts, but not do the finished grade on Ball Mountain?
Which was, sorry, which was part of the plan, anyway, given some of the cross movement this year.
Well, except for a few years before they finally go there.
Unless, you know, this spring showed some evidence of separation in that centerline, so we have Pike looking at some corrective actions on that. So our plan is not to go with enough surface until at least next year, but that we allow the, hopefully, those box culverts, or those, I say box culverts, but those string crossings to be replaced, and then, again, we have to make sure all that movement in the ground is become low, and we can correct anything else, and that's going to have to go through that process, and as we continue to work on Ball Mountain Road, we're not potentially chewing up that surface coat, we can continue to work off of that base coat.
Makes sense.
Make some more progress.
Absolutely, no disagreement on your plan of action, but a question constantly comes up from some folks that, all right, what's this going to cost us? How much is left, and what do we have to raise? And that's what I'm getting to.
How we need to come up.
So if we, you're right, so if we could come up with a worksheet for our next meeting, then we'll be able to have a discussion, knowing what the figures are and what our estimates are today's value.
That includes numbers from Jeff, with the Davis Bacon removed for certain parts?
Yeah, I mean, as much information as we could possibly put down, so we have something to work with and make up some decisions, make some decisions.
I guess I can add to that. Can, can we wait two weeks to do this, or should we be...
I don't think we have any choice, to be honest with you.
I, I agree.
I don't think we have any choice. I'll get to you in a second, Mark. So if, if you're all in agreement with that, do you need it defined any clearer as to what we're looking for, or does that pretty much cover the bases?
No, it pretty much covers the bases. You need to know what the realistic cost is going to be before you know what to do.
Yeah, and Rebecca can give you some finer numbers as to what the data, what the finances are. Mark?
I think that's a good idea to check in and see where we're at with all of this stuff, and, you know, we've got these high priority roads that are kind of in flux right now that you're concentrating on, but I think we ought to look at the entire list that the board has approved, too, just, you know, they're a few years down, you know, but just look at their estimates and look at the estimates on the ones we're doing, and, you know, maybe update them a little bit so we're talking about reality.
Yeah, great, agreed.
You know, so I, I just don't think we ought to, you ought to just look at, you know, the top four that you're working with right now, but, you know, spend a little time on the other ones as well.
I remember seeing a sheet, the original ratings had, like, ones, twos, threes, for different...
That's correct.
Yeah, I believe the ones we're talking about were all, all ones, top priority. What was one we were looking at a month ago, you and I and Earl, all of them?
Right.
Which one was that? Which street was that?
Alpine Way.
Alpine Way, yeah, I can't remember the name of it. Looking at that to do that this year, too.
All right, the other thing I want to need clarification on is, is Dave and Cindy's comment that the excise tax money is dedicated to paying the bond. That makes a difference in terms of...
The payment comes, it's set up in a fund two account, so it rolls over each year. It's being paid from that.
Right, right. I guess my point is this, if the thought process from this board is, well, we have excise money to pay for this thing, when we really don't, because the excise money is dedicated for the next X amount of years, then we have to look at that in terms of our future planning.
There's, it's right around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that come out of the excise each year for payment, but there is money...
What's the remainder?
You collect more money in excise.
Okay, so that information, again, will be part of the educational process for us.
The last audit showed three hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the next size revenues.
Yeah, okay.
So if we, if we allocated, what, two fifty?
Yeah.
So that's an extra hundred thousand dollars that could go into these future road projects. That would work.
Hang on, everybody, one second. Okay. Mark?
I'm also.
Yes?
I just want to let you guys know, I also reached out to Leanna about an extension or adding more money to the construction loan, and what fees would be or interest rate would be, would it change the interest rate? So we're also looking at that.
Good, thank you.
And we get about thirty-two thousand a year from DOT that has to go on a road construction project, so that's another thing to consider, is that a little extra money there.
So in my mind, if we see a spreadsheet similar to, we could pretty much follow along, it will answer the questions of the public as to what are our priority roads, where the money's dedicated to, we could just refer back to that each time you get a question, because I know you've asked questions, Mark, where I'm going? I don't know. I don't really have a sheet to look at. Cindy will remember, and I'm sure David and Donnie will, but there's a couple of us here. Yes, go ahead.
I, I seem to recall, Dave, I don't know if you remember the same thing, or Donnie, but it was expected that all of the excise tax revenue that was collected in a given year was going to be paid, used to pay down this debt. It's not a bond, it's a construction loan, with the expectation it would be paid off early. Not that there was just a designated amount, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I...
Actually, I think we, we knew that we were going to have a two-year period, possibly three before we had to start making the payments, so there could be potential for an extra five hundred to...
Right.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand that would build up before we had to start making payments.
Well, we clearly need that cleared up, because that changes the dynamics of the excise tax completely, at least in the conversations we've had.
Do we have any answer?
I, I have to look, we started making, the first year was interest on, and then you started making payments, and then you borrowed the second.
Right.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Hey.
Anything else you want to add?
No, I'm very pleased to hear, though, that the town got the ninety-five thousand, the full grand amount that we requested there in the Ball Mountain project, so that's, that's actually news for sure, so.
Too bad.
I, I expect over the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting some further information from them after their appeal period ends, and kind of set up the schedule and stuff for, for getting that whole finished up.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Move down to lands of judgment.
Tom has been in the office, which, if anybody had any questions, what the court last week, the town's chairman.
I'm sure you've all had time to read this, there's... You got, they had three options here. Tom had asked town manager John if we should be contacting legal, but to me, this is very clear, there's just three options. I don't think we need to get any more legal data, but what's your thoughts, folks? Do you want to ask some questions to Tom?
No, I just want to know where they came up with this amount, the fine.
Yeah, that was my question.
I agree.
Go ahead.
No, I was agreeing with Donnie on the question.
Yeah.
Did Tom come up with this?
No.
No, this is the judgment.
Our attorney came up with it.
On the front page.
That's his assessment of it, he's just giving us a paraphrase.
I understand that.
If you read the...
But it's got a figure in here for the fine, and I don't think it's enough.
Well, I would go fine and attorney fees, with an incentive for them to...
I don't know, we spent more than that, Tom going frigging around with this.
He looked on the actual judgment from the court.
Yep.
The third option says a hundred dollars a day violation, the town first noticed June 11th, 2018, to July 11th, 2019, for total thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
Yep.
So that's if they do nothing, and then make up to it, and the judgment also says if they do nothing, then we can go in and clean it up and bill them, and then if they don't pay us, then it goes through like a tax lien process, eventually we own the property. So that's... So that's the, you know, that's been already ruled in the COI law. So that's a plus. So we've given them till August 11th, or the judge has, have till August 11th. And then if they don't do anything, then us and the state oil. MDEP oil has its material specialists who can both go in and take care of the problems. And then bill, bill them for the cost.
So this 39,500, would that, would the state take some of that for their work to do this? Or does that all go to the town?
I don't know, it's just a fine, 39,000.
Yeah, but who gets it?
I believe a hundred dollar per day violation comes from our ordinance.
Right.
Can I just chime in on this one? Number three here, in accordance with made revised statutes.
Yeah.
That's what we're allowed to do. Am I correct?
Yeah.
So if the town, us, or whoever says you're gonna pay $100 a day, there's the total.
Up to today.
Okay? That doesn't necessarily mean that's what we're gonna do, I don't think. And if you need clarification on that, MMA will tell you what.
We can find out.
Great. Go ahead, Cindy.
Do the Lances have legal representation?
We thought they did. But they didn't show.
Neither did their lawyer, nobody showed.
But no correspondence from any attorney acting on their behalf?
The question I asked earlier today, who answers? That's not a good thing for them.
They did bring a couple of loads of stuff to the transfer station recently.
They brought three on Wednesday of last week and four on Thursday.
So they did that this week, but they didn't have anybody go to court with them?
So they haven't seen us then?
Wow.
Honestly, I don't know.
And what was the purpose, if you don't mind me asking, about three lawyers showing up at the transfer station?
I hadn't heard of that. This is the first time hearing. I'm not aware of any.
Heard that either, three lawyers at the.
Well, didn't you just say that a few minutes ago?
Loads.
Oh, loads, well, thank you for blaring my. Man, and didn't you think it was lawyers too?
No, I heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me turn them up. Yes.
That wasn't a bad joke. Yeah.
So what you're saying is that's been an attempt to move forward?
Correct.
Yeah. And Richie, as you said, the last meeting was counting all the loads.
Which was where the data came from, was Rich once again. But he did say, yeah, three loads on Wednesday and four more on Thursday.
Still talking to you about lawyers and that. I heard the owl.
There we go.
I guess we just wait and see how this all shakes out.
So you're all set with that?
I'm glad you asked that to clear that up. You would have been like, well.
Oh, yeah.
Three lawyers to transfer.
Would you have reported that up? Thank you.
Tom's letter, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
I heard it correctly, Steve.
Tom's letter says if the board, or if the board of selectmen are in agreement, they could choose. Are we in agreement? Is that?
Yes, want to support the code enforcement officer, absolutely.
So they give their first choice, I guess?
No, I understand that. I just, I didn't, I didn't know if we were moving on or if there was a formality we weren't meeting.
He's already moving on, all that's he, this is already marching forward. This is his report to us about this.
He's planning to go tomorrow to present.
Yeah.
The option.
Okay. Do we need a vote on this? That's what I was.
Yeah, I understand.
The court already ruled.
I know, but it says.
No, it's, it's just if we, yeah. If they're in agreement, the Lances could choose. It's just if we wanted to sort of like, wanted to.
Well, then let's do that. Let's take a motion to agree with Tom's proposal.
Tricia just went down to the office. She needed to ask.
Hi, Kenny. Welcome.
Hey, hello.
How are you?
I'm, uh.
Frog rock.
I won't say Kyle's here, but I thought Joe was gonna be here.
Kyle's a good representative.
Yeah, he is.
He said you guys were taking 25% of each price.
Well.
I don't teach you not to come.
I think we already did.
We don't?
We tell you not to.
Okay, good.
He says as long as you're happy with the three options, he's gonna present to him tomorrow.
The only way we're gonna know we're happy is if we blow them. But whatever.
Okay, we're at personnel policy. Page, page 17, the first one, is what we saw last time. The changes are in second page 17, for the second reading tonight. So, yes, John?
I forwarded what we had presented to you last meeting to Anna Lee, and then she sent backwards on the second page. And I think that's much better written than we laid where I had come up with the first time. Covers the same issues, but the way she writes it, it seems to fit a whole lot better.
So if you're all in agreement, you've read through page two, or the second page of 17, excuse me?
And then, one more thing, that is Article 12 in the personnel policy. That would cut off the previous page. But the part that's crossed out above, that's all that we have there currently. So you can see it's quite a, quite a bit word to define.
So you're all set with it, John?
Yes.
How about you both? You want me to read it?
Oh, gosh, no.
Okay, I need a motion to accept. Oh, gosh.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Town of Rangeley Personnel Policy Changes to Pages. It'll actually be to Article 12. As presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Do business. Agreement with DuBoyKing for hangar taxi lane. John?
Well, um, if you guys here, Rebecca's here, Mark here. So they just had an airport meeting that approved this just before our meeting, unanimous. Pretty much what it is, is the current contract for the runway extension. They have to put a 300-foot roughly paved test strip down. And it makes perfect sense if we already contracted with DuBoyKing to come up with a master plan for all the hangars, to have them put the pavement in front of where the hangars are gonna be, you know, designated. So would save on the cost of having to put the pavement down. Because they have, the contractor has to build a test strip right now. So I guess the airport committee recommended some different dimensions. I'll leave that up to them, but pretty much it to the town would save us from having to pay for the cost of pavement when we eventually do this. If we do it separate from the contract we already have with Sargent. So I don't know what the value of that is. What's the value of that pavement might be for 300 feet?
Yeah, it's 9,000 square feet, so it's equivalent, it's about $5,000 or $6,000 worth of pavement.
So that's my understanding of what this is all about. And, you know, Guy could tell you more about it.
Go ahead, Guy.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, while Sergeant is mobilized at the airfield, you'd be saving on mobilization to go and just carve out a new dimension that we came through. The contract, I believe, says 35 feet by 300 feet, just under 9,000 square feet. We.
May I interrupt?
Sure.
Airport commission met today and it's 45 feet by 200.
That's correct. Yep, we modified it today. That's what I was going, Steve.
Okay.
We did modify it today. The contract says 35 by 300, but we modified it in the airport commission to 45 by 200. Made the most sense. The contract itself would be the design or the engineering for Sargent, while they're already mobilized, to go in, carve out the footprint, remove it. They're gonna take a lot of the borrowed material that's coming, that's excess to the runway anyway. So the cost to construct at this point would be to carve that footprint out, put the materials back in, get good compaction, and then to pave it. The paving would be paid for by the airport project. Once again, we have to do 9,000 square feet of paving as a test strip for, make sure the material compacts properly and meets FAA specifications. Whether we do it on the runway, or we do it as an access road, or we do it in this particular area, which in essence would provide an apron and taxi lane for the first two hangars, which are equal to this dimension of what are currently at the airfield, which are 60 feet wide, 70 feet deep. So you would be able to have apron and taxiway to in front of those two hangars. So you could immediately, if somebody wanted to build a hangar, be able to build hangars. The contract itself, again, is just the design work for the sub base materials and then oversight of construction. We minimize the cost for oversight of construction, because Peter Bowle, our construction inspector for the runway, is already on site, so there's not gonna be any traveling back and forth. They're already there. He would just do it as an additional duty, you know, with his current duties of inspecting the runway construction project.
Thank you. Any questions, Bag?
Guy, you said that was, that was for the technical observation of construction, because he's already there? That's why that's low?
That's correct. It is lower, yeah, that's right. We're estimating Cindy about five days of construction time, so.
Good to know.
Yep.
In conjunction with, it doesn't extend the seven day date period?
We will not extend the seven day date period.
Okay, John?
Just as a not to exceed cost of there, based on there, you know, you know, the costs that are also in there. Roughly $18,000 for TAPG 2506, TAPB, Design Drives and Specifications 9586. General Administration, TAPD 2142, and Construction Administration 2445. Technical Observation and Construction, 1241. So that's just about $18,000.
Any questions for Guy?
So just those dimensions will be corrected in this agreement before John signs it? Or can you initial and cross out and initial?
You can initial.
I think we can initial and cross it out. Cross out, initial.
That's all it is. We've already had our attorney check the language. He's made a few changes, and he's happy with it.
Anything else? How about the board? Anybody else have any? Yeah, good. Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
Need a motion? You could just do this. This one is part of the project, right? We don't need a motion for this.
It's savings with the project? I'm sorry, the mayor, go ahead, John.
No, it's an additional contract with DuBoyKing.
Alright.
I think you need a motion for that, so.
So what's the total then? Somewhere around $18,000 means.
17,833.
Say again?
17,833.
Go ahead, though.
Not to exceed 18.
You're in a motion.
I don't know what the motion actually is, though. What's the wording? What do we need?
Accept this contract from DuBoyKing for the test area, for the amount that you talked about and the dimensions that we talked about.
Second.
Okay. Yes, indeed. The dimensions will be 45 by 200. Did you get the total, Tricia?
17,833.
Yes.
Okay, moved in second.
So just a couple of, so the, were there any other changes that the airport commission recommended, aside from the dimensions?
No.
Other?
They're gonna have a long skinny extension from where George Dunn hangar is.
We changed.
Now they're shortening it up so that it would accommodate hangar three and hangar four, conventional type hangars right.
Yep. Thank you. Paul, Vader? No votes, thank you. Thanks again, Guy. Appreciate you coming by.
Of course, absolutely.
You doing well?
I did.
Good.
I was along with the runway for our.
Are you gonna be here Wednesday?
We have a late. Yes.
Okay. Next is a transfer from General Reserve for a union contract.
So, uh. Last year's budget, the town put in 15,000 in anticipation of not finishing the union contract. So we had to go retroactive. There'd be a pool of money to draw from. So the retroactive cost, I believe it was like, what, three months after the year started, when you finally settled the contract? So that cost 4,519.89. So that would, we would require you to approve that, because it's in a reserve fund.
So this would be for the reserve fund for 2018-19?
Yes, from the General Reserve. This would reduce the 15,000 that you put in there by 4,519.89. And that would balance the accounts on their salaries that were approved in the final union.
Okay, but would the, but the funds were never allocated to cover it?
No, we just, because the year's ending.
Right.
We're closing it out now, and those monies would be transferred to each of those departments.
Okay, good for them.
And it would come from the General Reserve account. So because it's a reserve account, it would come to you to, okay, take the money from it.
Alright.
You have to approve those withdrawals.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of $4,519.89 from the General Reserve account for the union contract negotiations pay for fiscal year 2019.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Next is the MMA nominations. What I'd like, if we could, is for you to move the slate as presented. I'll sign it, send it off to them. Unless you have some other suggestions of who you'd like to see.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Maine Municipal Association voting ballot by nominating or voting for Vice President, one-year term, James Gardner Jr., Town Manager, Town of Easton. And for the executive committee members, three-year terms, John Beekman, Chairman of the Select Board for the Town of Fayah, David Seer, Town Manager for the Town of Mars Hill, and Ivan McPike, Mayor, Town of Hampton.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I'll sign that off tonight and get it out of here. This one kind of threw me for a loop a little bit. Keith, you still here? What's the, I have a bill from Sunrise View Farms. Where did this stuff go? Trish?
Don Field dropped this off.
Well, the planter boxes.
Planters on the trash cans. I saw him do it. Talked to him.
They go where?
They put planters on, sorry to interrupt you.
No.
They put planters on top of the, all the new garbage cans downtown before.
Okay, I just didn't know where they went. So I, I had to ask a question.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So there's five over, five boxes, I'm assuming. Says five here.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Who waters them? That would be my wife's question. I withdraw, I withdraw. I need a motion to pay this bill.
Oh, yeah.
Out of the reserve account for economic development reserve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve $582.45 taken out of the economic development reserve to pay the Sunrise View Farm bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Who is gonna water them? Just out of curiosity. I'm assuming.
I'll fit it into Parks and, that's on my schedule. I'll get it in there. I didn't even see that. I didn't know they were gonna get it.
Well, I mean, it's just, we just spent, what, 200 bucks on plants. Probably shouldn't kill them. And they don't look that great when they're dead. Just a thought.
Any more discussion? Go ahead, Ask. Go ahead.
No, no, it's, I was just gonna save your, you know, your wife's questions answered.
Maybe not to her dissatisfaction, but tell you right now, all in favor? Alright, no votes, thank you. Thank you. My wife went away for three days and I spent three days watering flowers. And I have a new appreciation for the level of commitment to horticulture. How many of you reports? Department head updates, you saw those. You also saw the calendar for the MMA convention in October. I've already told John that I would like to attend. I'd love to have you come on. You can get time to go.
Me?
Yeah.
It's in Bangor.
Yeah. If you get, again, it's informational. Cindy comes back with a wealth of knowledge each year.
Yeah, I went last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's if you can fit it in your schedule. I mean, it's, sometimes it's not easy.
It's well worth calling.
Oh, yeah. No, I would absolutely like to go. My children like to give me schedules and then give me ones that change. Then I get emailed ones that change after that.
Yep, yep, perfect.
Steve, it's October 2nd and 3rd in Mango, Odesia. And any of you that can go, let us know so we can get you registered. And the other part of this is we ask you if we can close the town hall so the staff can go. I think it's well, it's well for them to go because they all, you know, all the associations, the Clerks Association, Town Managers Association, they all have different parts of the two-day program.
So it's Wednesday and Thursday?
Second and third of October.
Yeah, I think last year you guys were pretty, you were good about getting notice out well in advance of the closure. Because that's-
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
If it's okay with you folks to-
Yeah. Is there any heartburn over that from anyone? No? All right. So be it. Bless America, thank you. Next up is our county tax bill. Sort of an FYI. This year, we are sending to the county 672,154 dollars and 50 cents.
Half of Allen Street.
That puts it in a stark perspective. Half of Allen Street.
Not much we can do about it.
Yep. Is this, is this county tax piece of paper that we have here, is it posted out front so people can see it? Could it be? Yeah, I think that'd be nice to be able to say.
So they know.
That's how much you spent and here's your description. But that's just my way of putting it. Select Board Communications. Thanks to Cindy for contacting the Town Manager for providing us with, I was going to do that tonight, I actually have the card with me. 10 best practices of New England elected officials. Let's see in your packet. It's a good piece of information. Two pages. Again, thank you, Cindy, for bringing that up. We also, I was asked to talk about the cell phone tower by Ethan. And so if it's all right with you, Ethan, the thing that Cindy instilled in me a long time ago is to get it on the agenda.
Right.
But I would request that you go see Tom Ellis and talk to him about the one at the top of Cemetery Hill. And then Town Manager will fill you in on what's going on here. And then you can get some answers for it because there are still some unanswered questions in there.
What is the status of the tower here?
It's all done and they're ready to turn it over to us. It's going to be ours. And then I believe in the contract, it's like 20,000 a year. We've seen that here.
It's fully operational.
20,000 a year.
It's fully operational at this moment?
Yeah, but it's only to Verizon customers.
Okay.
So there is no benefit to any other customer in town unless you have a Verizon contract.
Yeah.
So that must be the one, dear point that nobody understands is that we have, yes, the town has a new cell phone tower, but it benefits a very, very limited population.
Yeah.
And the one on the hill takes care of AT&amp;T, so get over it.
Actually, that's T-Mobile.
Those are the questions that I have.
I told it was AT&amp;T and today they corrected us and said it's T-Mobile.
On a positive note, what I was told, through an individual who won't ever admit this, but T-Mobile is making a large push in the Northeast to put up multiple towers. And they say that that will be a very, very competitive market. So keep your eyes open for that.
FYI, TracOne also uses the same towers as Verizon.
I don't know about the rest of you, but this seems like duplicity on duplicity on duplicity. You know, let's have a legislative agreement here. You put a cell phone tower up, you rent to every one of them. Instead of having multiple towers everywhere doing the same thing?
They all have to want to rent from it. They all have to want to put their equipment on it, not all of them do.
Well, if they want the market share-
Correct.
Then they get on the tower. Probably I'm getting in too deep here. I apologize, but go ahead.
This is secondhand information. I went to the Land Use Regulation Commission hearing last Wednesday about the proposed cell tower upon Dallas Hill. And the presenters there said that the state of Maine has entered into a contract with AT&amp;T to provide cell tower coverage that will, in rural areas, for the, to benefit broadband and cellphone communications where it's lacking. And they showed a big red elliptical circle on the top of Dallas Hill and asked the presenter to find a tower site inside of that thing to, and that they were, this is going to be repeated, you know, through rural areas. I guess some pots have already been served. I believe that one at St. Louis is, is also part of AT&amp;T system.
There's a lot of information that we got to get.
But I don't, you know, like I say, this is secondhand. I haven't had a chance to troop that out. But at least this is what the presenters told the commissioners. They didn't say anything about St. Louis's, but at Christmas time, Brian told me it was AT&amp;T. And then these presenters were saying that the state of Maine has contracted with AT&amp;T to provide this service throughout rural Maine.
Go ahead, John.
Remember in the contract that we have with Verizon out here? If, when they turn it over to us, if we lease space to somebody else, a competitor, then that competitor has to pay half the construction cost of what they just incurred. And I believe that's around 150,000 is what they just spent to build that thing. So, and then they would have to pay probably half the annual maintenance fee, the lease fee that they're going to pay us. Well, keep in mind, when we start receiving that money, we ought to reserve a bunch of it because I remember the contract said that we were responsible for maintaining. So we better have some money in a reserve fund, you know. Five years from now, I could get hit by lightning or something, who knows?
Well, if Ethan is okay with this, why don't, why not at the next meeting, we, if somebody come to us with a plan on how we're going to manage this and its funding, or the funding stream we're going to get, where it goes. And then if you have any ancillary questions associated with this, get it to him. We'll get it on the agenda and we'll fire away.
Okay.
That sound good?
Yeah. I guess the only thing I wanted to know is is there any way that we could allow John, Tom, Keith, somebody to reach out to the biggest carrier for our town, which we have all our contracts through US Cellular and say, listen, this is what's going on. What's it going to take to get you to jump on this new tower or that one? But maybe we need other information before that.
Well, that's a good question. Yeah.
I have US Cellular in Mexico where they have an office there. But I still get erratic coverage up there. Not 100%, but if I move with 100 yards, I-
I don't know about the rest of you, but for me, US Cellular is still the best.
It's on Allen Street.
You got a question?
I find this interesting, what John was saying about the details of the contract. Because when the previous Town Manager presented the tower going in here, you know, he stated that the Town of Rangelley was going to be able to lease a space to some other carrier. And I thought he said there were no strings attached, you know, it could be anybody, but it sounds like there's lots of strings attached there. Which, it surprised me that, you know, there wouldn't be any strings attached. But, you know, that's the way it was presented to you folks.
We have the top 20 feet. They added 20 feet to the top for that for our use. I don't think it's for a competitor. But it's got a fire to fight and all the police stuff.
It actually, it is, the 20 feet could, or it has sufficient room to have another carrier on that tower.
She could piggyback.
Correct. So the question was asked not to keep going on this conversation, I apologize. The question was, or it was told me the other day when I talked to Representative Alback was, he questioned why Verizon wasn't put at the top. The answer to that is, is there's an umbrella. They want to keep that umbrella snug in the town so that you don't have people in Reddington per se that say, look, I have Verizon, I have two bars, but I can't make a phone call. Problem with that becomes is your phone is far less capable of receiving a signal than that tower is to push that, amplify that signal out. So as fancy as your phone, our phones are today with technology and ability to use the internet, play games, et cetera, et cetera, most of that energy is taken just for those tasks and not for that single generation. So they keep that signal lower, closer to town so that people that are in the proximity of Rangelley, downtown Rangelley, have that capability. So from henceforth, the ability of that is the carrier can now come in above them and push their umbrella out a little bit further and/or contract with them to utilize the signal they have currently.
Got to love that customer service approach, huh? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have something to add. Steve Hall, who's local guy, lives in Dallas Plantation, reached out to me. For those of you who may not know what he does, he is an energy systems professional. Has his own company, SGH Energy Resources LLC. And he asked if the Town of Rangelley had ever considered solar. And I said, well, I go, your timing's spot on. And I go, we're gathering information. So he would like to attend our next selectance meeting and discuss solar, take questions, and all that. So I just wanted to put that out there. He also asked, Keith, he's familiar with the layout of Chick Hill, but he would like a closer look. So I'm going to give him your contact information, okay? John's as well, and he can coordinate that with you. He said something, because of the new legislation that is just recently passed by Governor Mills, it's made solar a lot. They have to jump through fewer hoops. It's less expensive. And so, and he'll talk to us about that at our August 5th meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dave, anything on Select Board Communications?
No.
Donnie?
No.
All right. Steve told, we just got two. First of all, Donnie's idea was brought to me a little bit ago. And I want to get it on the front burner here and see where we can go, or if we're going to go anywhere with this. Apparently in the past, there's been an idea of having the police locate it on this corner lot down here, which I call Chuck Lad parking lot.
It's three school street.
One of many, but awesome.
But, yeah. And I'm not sure how to proceed with this thing, but I want it on, it's somewhere. And if Donnie wants to spearhead this thing, then it'd be awesome.
No problem. I've been trying to do this for years.
Yep. So, and see where we go with this thing. See if that's something that Don wants, we want, whatever. And then, and then, yep. And thank you very much for that. I had talked to you, John, about the fish screen and about the stairwell outside here. Can you, you want Keith to give us an update of where we are?
He's, I think your son was going to do it this week or next week, Keith?
He's busy, I believe it's next week, but he preferred to be there on the phone.
Yeah, that's the screen part. What about the planking on the top where the kids can get on it?
Quinn had mentioned that he's wanting to coordinate with Mike and, well, Mike will-
All right.
Or I can touch base also.
Is there any opportunity for you to follow through to sort of kick this one into gear? I mean, you gave us some timeframes because summer is with the 15th of July and kids head out of here in a month. I'd like to see them on that thing fishing because that's general rule fishing as of this year. Be nice to see them be able to use it. And what about the stairwell outside here? That's all right?
Maybe I'll use a little of your power.
I think Keith might have a little bit more pushing show on that one than I would. What about the stairs out here, Keith?
I just got, DigSafe just came. This is the, today, or Friday, I'm sorry. So we're making progress. My plan, although it's not written, would be essentially to kind of keep that same footprint. There are other options, but I think that's cost effective. Keep the same footprint, pull the comic freedom ramp currently, pave it, still that same price of $3,000. We'll cut the railings off, clean them up, repaint them, put new footers in for those. And then I'd like to square off the, pull all the shrubbery out of the front, change that to a angle planning garden. Square that off, kind of, right now, angles out past the garage, which obviously is intentional based on the corner of the building there. I'd like to square that off, first X, and really just kind of keep that, again, it's keep that same looks, but keep paving and have better shrubbery up front for both planters.
You have a timeline for this?
I'm hoping right off, have this dig saved. Earl's, the escher just got fixed, excuse me, the escher just prepared to air. The intention is to bring this better here. We'll pull everything in motion, pull that out. I'll coordinate with Pike, everything pays back in, and we will, yeah, I'll get some file numbers together. I'll stay tuned and hopefully in the next two weeks or month, based on schedules.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Good?
Need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go to an executive session, MSRA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Subsection 405, 6C and 405, 6B?
That's correct.
D, E, L, F, D.
Second.
Thank you. That's it, 10 after 7.